Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight we have Plant Moran for our study session. Today is November 24th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. Go ahead, please.
Thank you so much. My name is Martin Olenek. I'm the audit partner on the audit. Clearly, and Nikki Achos with me and Joe Malashik. He was supposed to be in, oh, it says he can't unmute himself, so. Don't mind. Joe Malashik is, and then Nikki Achos are the two. So Nikki is the audit manager and Joe is the senior. Did a lot of the, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I'm looking for Joe right now.
And yeah.
There he is.
Right in the middle.
Go ahead, unmute yourself, sir.
There he is. Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And so we're going to be presenting the audit to you as well as the findings from the 2020 financial statement audit. Before we start with the numbers and the graphs, et cetera. I did want to point out that the thickest of the documents, and I realize it's very likely you have a digital version of the PDF, which is 84 pages. We're not going to go through like we have, we haven't in the past, page by page. Joe's going to cover that in graphical form. What we're going to do is just want to point out that on page one of that financial statement is the opinion letter. That is the only document that technically belongs to Plant Moran. And that document, that page or a couple of pages do state that you can rely on the financial statements as they are presented. It is unmodified opinion. Once again, we did have a few findings as we have the last few years. There's actually much less in scope of findings. There have been a lot less entries and so on that we had to post. Provide to the city in order to make the statements accurate. But those adjustments have been posted and they are included in the statements. So therefore they are materially correct and you can rely on them, like I said, for budgeting purposes, et cetera. So I just wanted to highlight that. That is again, once again, unmodified opinion. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Joe so you can go through the graphs. And then following the graphs, Nikki and I are going to provide you with the findings, the summary from the federal single audit report as well as the post audit letter. So with that, Joe, if you can cover the graphs and Nikki, I believe she's going to be the driver for the sharing the screen.
Yeah, absolutely.
If it works for you, Nikki.
Actually, I don't have the ability to share my screen.
You do not? What I can do is if I have the ability, okay.
I can make her a co-host, then she can share. Hold on. Go ahead, please.
Thank you so much.
Perfect, so. I guess you can go to the next slide, Nikki.
You can see that?
Yep. So this first slide just shows a five-year trend of the main corporate fund revenue. As you can see, revenue has remained relatively consistent this year and increased about $2.8 million. And property taxes is the most significant portion of this revenue at 55% of the revenue. And millage rates increased slightly this year. And Nikki, you can go to the next slide. And taxable value of the city also increased this year. This kind of just shows that. Prior to 2008, with the recession, taxable values dropped, declined drastically. And as you can see, since then, taxable values have increased slightly year after year. This slide highlights the historical trend of our state shared revenue. So state share revenue is the second largest source of revenue for the city. And typically, we tend to see an increase since 2014. But due to COVID-19 this year, the state cut the August CVTRS payment.
Oh, the sharing kind of changed. Nikki. There we go.
So this payment, as you can see, caused a decrease in 2020, but it was, it has been fully reinstated going forward for fiscal year 2021. So we expect to see an increase again in fiscal year 2021. This slide is the corporate fund expenditures. And again, just the five-year trend. In total, expense expenditures increased about $2.7 million from our prior year. And our largest increases really in public safety and public works increased about $1 million each due to various capital purchases that were made throughout the year.
Wait, excuse me, Joe?
Yep.
If you don't mind, you said major expenditures that we've got in public works. And I think you said general government, is that correct?
Public safety.
Public safety, I'm sorry. Offhand, what were those? Do you know what were the major ones at least? Or does the mayor maybe?
They were, so they were capital expenditures, fixed assets. And we can double check, but I believe some of them, especially in public safety, were grant-related expenses for fixed assets.
Yeah, a major, a big portion of that was the AFG equipment, which on the revenue side, you do have a reimbursement from the other communities that you distributed that equipment to.
Okay, AFG, you said?
Yeah, sorry, assistance to firefighters. There was a regional grant that the city received this year for purchasing equipment and then distributed it to other communities.
For COVID, for COVID protection, I mean?
No, it was not COVID-related.
What was it? I'm just curious.
Radios, I want to say, were a significant portion of that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and the city retained some of the equipment and some of it was passed on to other participating communities in the grant.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Muscat, you did have your hand up. Did you have a question?
Yeah, I was going to ask if somebody could share their screen so we could see this, but they beat me to the punch.
Okay, thanks. I asked in the future, council people, please raise your hand before you, and be acknowledged before you speak. Go ahead, please.
Should we continue? I believe the mayor was.
Yeah, continue.
Okay.
And here we go. So this slide highlights the corporate fund balance. And typically, we like to look at the health of a fund to look at the unassigned and the assigned fund balance. So what's really available for the city to spend and as a ratio of our total annual expenditures. And typically, a measure that we like to meet is 15 to 30%. So as you can see, the city is trending upwards since 2014. Where the city's here at 14.5%. Really nothing that we see that is anything that is worth further follow-up or anything like that. But just something worth noting.
If I can add to that, too, is, so you can see in 2014, the city had the deficit clearly. And since then, and Joel mentioned earlier on some earlier slides, just the property tax values, how much they depleted during the recession about 10 years ago. And even though it, the property taxes have been going up, unfortunately, they haven't rebounded to the levels that we, you know, the city had in 2009. So it's really put a strain on the general and on the corporate fund. But you can see that overall, you've been able to really manage a lot of the expenses and you've been able to move that fund balance upwards. And as Joe said, you know, a lot of times we see between 50 and even 30%, but the kind of the spot that a lot of municipalities have been looking at over the years is probably between 10 and 20. So you're kind of in that ballpark. The higher percentages have been really coming into play over the years since the recession. And now with COVID, just kind of to be more on the safe side and save money for a rainy day kind of deal. But you know, looking at 14 and a half percent, 15% of your fund balance, it is kind of right there where at a minimum you should be. And I would, I would agree completely with Joe that nothing that would really alert us to, you know, really big concerns or anything. The couple of things that I think this alludes to very well during the presentation, if I was looking at like big areas of kind of to watch out for and what the city needs to focus on is really looking at your future expenditures, especially water and sewer. As you know, there's some significant projects that are coming up. I know there's some bonding that's discussed, et cetera. But so that would be a big item. And then the other item is looking at the OPEB funding overall. So I know the city set up a couple of trusts this year for the general employees as well as the public safety employees. And that's definitely an item that it's a liability that the city is going to have to fund over time. And that would be definitely an area of focus that I would recommend. So sorry to interrupt, Joe.
Problem. So this slide highlights the breakout of the fund balance, different components. The non-spendables related to prepaid where cash has already left the city. Restricted fund balances can only be used for certain purposes based on the revenue source. And the assigned and unassigned, like we saw on the previous slide, that's what's fund balances available to use for the city. And then the assigned funds are, city has designated $2 million for, to be used for retiree healthcare in the future. And the unassigned portion, as you can see, continues to increase. And that's just the building up those reserves. So those will continue to be built up going forward. Next slide, Nikki. And as Martin alluded to, here's the breakdown for the water and sewer fund. Revenue increased about $1 million, which was an increase of water sales and sewage disposal charges in the year. In total, the capital outlay decreased since not all projects were able to be completed in time in the year just due to COVID. And as you can see, just overall, in the past five years, there's been an operating income shortfall. So, which is why rates have had to increase just to try to make up for this deficit here in the water and sewer fund over the past five years.
Yeah, this essentially shows the water and sewer fund over the last six years more on a cash basis. So if you're looking at the income statement in the financial statements, it's truly an accrual type statement. So it shows the depreciation expense and some other things that are more accrual. So it doesn't really drive the cash balance. So the goal of this slide is looking at the operating income without depreciation, to kind of looking at more on a cash basis over time. And then that adds up over six-year period, almost $25 million. And then if you look at how much the city has been spending on capital outlay as well as debt payments over the same time period, it's actually 26.7 million. So you can see that you have higher obligations over that time period versus the actual cash coming in. And that's one of the reasons, as Joe mentioned, that, you know, you have had to make some difficult decisions in increasing the rates in order to be able to fund those expenditures, given the older infrastructure within the city.
And then this last slide just highlights the unrestricted net position available for the city. And we see an increase in this year's just based on prior year had costs related to DUA with the city taking on costs from, from that, one of that came into the city's costs and everything from the county. So overall, that really is the end of the graphs. If anyone has anything else?
And we can, we'll cover the letters. As I mentioned earlier, feel free to ask us any questions if you have them now, but you know, we'll definitely be sticking around for any questions after the letters as well. And I know the letters will have some findings, et cetera. So definitely want to make sure that we address any questions you may have.
Okay, Councilman Conston, did you still have a question?
Yeah, not a question. Director Hashem and Moby do want to be let in.
They're in, as far as I know.
Yeah, if you look, they're, they have no visual, no audio. And it looks like the mayor is waving his hand, as you can probably see.
Okay, hold on, let me unmute the mayor.
Go ahead. Thank you, Chair. I wanted to point something out that Martin, you, or Joe, either one of you, but on the slide dealing with page five and page four, there, there was a proposal that I am vetoing, but it was to move the $2 million that is in a sign, but restricted in fund balance. If that $2 million gets sent into the trust fund, that will reduce our corporate fund balance by $2 million, which would put us below 10%. And that's one of the reasons that I vetoed it. And John Riley was trying to tell the council that that is our cushion in that fund balance for cash flow and for being within the parameters that we should be. And we do not want to transfer it. But what is your take on that, Martin?
So, so first of all, the assigned fund balance means that, you know, the council has assigned a portion in order to be able to use for a specific purpose, in this case for OPEB funding. It does not have to be transferred for OPEB at this time. It's up to the city to decide when that actual transfer occurs. You are absolutely correct, Mayor. If that transfer occurs, you're going to drop below 10% of overall fund balance compared to your expenditures. And the concern for that is if you drop below a certain level, you may not be able to have enough funds, enough cash in the bank in order to be able to cover current liabilities. And primarily would be any debt payments and clearly labor costs, so salaries and wages. So that would be a concern. Having that money in the assigned fund balance doesn't mean that you necessarily have to spend it. You can still invest in it based on the city's requirement, you know, what you're allowed to invest in. Being able to transfer to the trust definitely opens up more investment opportunities. However, once you put the money in the trust, you cannot take it back in. So that's the biggest concern that like it's, it just locks you in and it's only being able to be utilized for other post-employment benefits. So long-term healthcare costs for retirees. So that would be a concern that once you put that in, it's essentially locked away. So in case there's a rainy day, you will not be able to utilize. It's clearly up to the city to determine what you would like to do with it. But it does prevent you from being able to utilize it for other purposes once it's in the trust.
Next, we have Councilman Abdullah. Did you still have a question?
Yes, please. I had a question on something else, but since I have you on the line right now, Martin, you said it can never be brought back in. Now, the key word is never, never, as in not in the same fiscal year or never, never?
Never, ever, unless it's for post-employment benefit payments. So when the city receives, you know, the invoices for the post-employment benefits, you can pay as you go, which historically the city has been paying the invoices from operations annually. But once it's in the trust, you can't use that money. You can apply it towards some of those post-employment benefits, but you can't use it for capital expenditures, for example. So it definitely locks you in from that perspective.
It's an irrevocable trust once you do transfer it. But that will then, the money that you transfer will then go towards the calculation of your total liability when the valuation is performed.
Okay, but while it's in the corporate fund, the city, whether it's treasurer or whoever, it does have a right to be able to use that money for paying off things as long as it's put back in by the end of the fiscal year? Or how does that work exactly?
So the city can decide, the city council can decide how to assign that portion. So you can relieve the assignment and just say, you know, we can put it back in unrestricted if you feel that it's needed in operations. Or you can leave it in the sign so that way down the road, you can still transfer the money for the OPEB. So it provides more flexibility for the city if it stays within this versus moves into the trust.
I see. Okay. And the main reason for my question was in regards to page eight. You have the water and sewer fund unrestricted net position. And obviously, we have quite a bit of an increase from 19, we had a major decrease in 19, a quite a bit of an increase in 20. Can anybody give me a little detail on this, why there was suddenly a jump? Because in five years where it was below the zero line?
Nikki, Joe, is that related to the actuarial analysis?
You're, you're looking at the unrestricted.
Page eight.
Page eight, so it's page nine of the PDF. And so the unrestricted fund balance and water and sewer fund of 1.1 million.
Okay, and I don't have the prior year in front of me. So that did that increase from last year?
It's about $2 million higher.
So a big piece of that, without getting into the details, I believe is related to DUA. Joe had touched upon this. So the communities purchased the DUA system from the county last year. And when that happened, there was a large loss that was recorded in 2019 that didn't recur this year.
Okay, but there was, it called, there was a loss of over $2 million in 15, almost $2 million in 16, 4,017, 300,018, and then 19, almost a million. So there was a loss over five, seven-year period, and now there's an increase. So would that be the same reason?
No, because DUA was a one-time, one-timer.
Yeah, the previous years, your expenditures were higher than your revenues each, in each year.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I can check and see what DUA's impact was for 2020 as we're going through these discussions. So that's not an issue. I'll look in the files right now. But I believe the biggest impact by far was the DUA reporting this year.
Councilman Muscat, did you still have a question?
Yes, I do. Going back to the $2 million, keeping it where it is now. You're saying it can be used for whatever the city decides to use it for, correct?
Correct. You can unassign it at any point in time as the council.
Now, doesn't it have to be paid back with interest?
It's, this is, so it's not a restricted fund. So it's purely assigned by the council for a specific use. And you can decide to use it for any other purpose if you choose to.
So it's not a restricted fund, even though it's going for healthcare?
It is not. It's purely an assignment that you have the intention of down the road, putting it towards post-employment benefits. But it doesn't legally restrict you to only use it for that. You can change your mind at any point in time and put it as unrestricted. Or you can make it restricted for certain capital outlay or whatever the council would like.
If you, if you looked at the total fund balance in the corporate fund, it's, you have the non-spendable portion and you have the restricted portion. Those have to be categorized the way they are. But the rest of the pool is really just a categorization for transparency based on how council and the city is intending to spend it in the future.
See, what I don't like is the fact that we put $2 million toward healthcare coverage for retirees. And then we use the money and not give them any interest on it. That, to me, if I was an employee, I'd be angry.
Next, we have Councilman Conston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Regarding the water fund, Martin and Nicolette, the, is that surplus for this year, for 2020? How much of that is the increase in water rates? Is that why we, and will, can we expect a surplus next year like that? Or is that our surplus for 2020, just a one-time thing? One-time event?
Well, so the surplus is like the overall income. So on slide eight, it's the fund balance, so whatever is remaining. And so I did check and it is the DUA write-off last year. So that's why you had the significant loss last year. So this year, you end up adding to the fund balance. But so technically, it's the $1.1 million. You have unrestricted net position, so you can utilize it for any purposes the fund is required to have over the coming months, whether it's salaries, whether it's capital outlay, et cetera.
Yeah, my question is really the same as Councilman Abdullah's. So that increase or the, the surplus, I'm sorry, this year and the loss of all the prior years, at least that we have in front of us, is, is due to the Downriver Authority in a write-off and not due to, you know, the water rates bringing in more money or anything like that?
So let me, I'll open up last year's statements if you can give me one second and go one second. Technology is a little slow at times. So if I look at your last year's statements, there is, so your water and sewer rates did increase slightly last year, about 5 or 6%. And your total revenue increase, one usage went up a little bit, plus the water and sewer rate. So your overall water and sewer revenue went up from 19.9 million last year to 21.3 million. So that essentially added on to the surplus this year because the expenses overall stayed about the same. You had about 20.4 last year, you had about 20.9. So the expenses actually increased about 600,000, but your overall revenue increased a couple of million dollars.
I got you.
That's why the increase.
So increased usage, increased rates means a surplus this year?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Next, we have Councilman Abdullah.
So Martin, back to the $2 million question, there's been a push to have that as the restricted fund and put it away where we don't have as a city access to it. And you got on one hand, the mayor's position, which is, you know, you got to keep that over, you know, you don't want to drop it all the way down to 10%. What is the advantages and disadvantages of doing it one way or the other? Because you got two schools of thought here and I just want to see what your opinion here as the CPA.
Yep. So my biggest concern is making sure the fund, the corporate fund is healthy overall. And you want to make sure you have so much working capital. So your current assets, specifically cash, and you know, there's some other ones, but it's mostly made up of cash, can pay your current liabilities, which are coming due in the next, you know, 30, 60, 90 days. If you transfer that $2 million out, you really shorten that time period of how many days of availability you have for, you know, covering some of those expenses. So unless you bring in property taxes and some other revenues, you will literally run out of cash. So that $2 million gives you a cushion of extra days of coverage before you have to start collecting property taxes and things like that, before that cash comes into the door. So that, and it gives you the flexibility if you leave it assigned. And let's just say next year, and I don't know what the budget calls for next year offhand, but let's just say the budget calls for an additional fund balance, a surplus of $1 million, revenues exceeding expenses. So if you're able to add on a million dollars to your overall fund balance next year, at that point, you'd be probably around 20% or a little bit over 20%. Maybe that gives you a little bit more cushion to maybe transfer a portion of that $2 million to the OPEB trust.
Okay.
And kind of going back to.
And that's the advantages in keeping it in the corporate fund. But what is the disadvantages?
Yes, so the disadvantage, technically it ties your hands a little bit from the perspective that once you transfer it, you will not be able to use it. The disadvantage is, to be honest, the biggest disadvantage of not transferring is that if you transfer it to the trust, the trusts are able to invest in other vehicles, investment vehicles, and likely earn a little bit more interest. At the end of the day, the employees and the retirees are not any worse off or any better off from the perspective that they're still going to get their healthcare. So they're not missing on it. It's unlike a pension where, especially a defined contribution pension, where, you know, your 401K goes up and you can invest in better investment vehicles, therefore you're going to get more money. In this case, both the pension, which is defined benefit, as well as the OPEB, which is again, essentially a defined benefit plan because the employee is going to get the healthcare coverage, no matter what, they're not any worse off. What is up happening is if you're able to invest in better overall, I don't know, like stock market or mutual funds or things like that. And if you can gain more money, that means down the road, the city doesn't have to provide other funds to cover that because the investment earnings are, help cover some of those expenses. But the employees and retirees are not any worse off one way or another by any means.
So there's no advantage to keeping it separate? I mean, because some have felt that's what the charter shows, so there's no advantage to keeping it in a separate account that you could see at least.
You mean like advantage of putting it to the trust?
Right.
The only advantage is you technically, if you can earn more money.
Okay.
But you know, like it's kind of speculative in nature, you know, like in theory, the market, mutual funds and things like that should earn you more money than the 0.01% of interest in the bank right now. Because the bank is basically, they're kind of keeping your money for free right nowadays.
Right. Thank you.
Councilman Conston? Councilman Constant?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Martin, I guess an analogy might be, I, like, nine, ten years ago, a lot of companies said they're just gonna go out of business and for their employees not to worry, the Pension Benefit Guarantee Corporation will pick up your, your, and provide a portion of your pension benefit. And at least a couple of years ago, and probably more so now, there was talk of the Pension Benefit Guarantee Corporation running out of money. And they changed the law and made a lot of personal liability for corporate officers if they close a company and form other entities, so I guess, but I'm, one of the advantages of having the money available for the city and for cash flows, you keep the city going, the city doesn't bounce checks or go bankrupt, and does better overall, and has a better bond rating overall, and therefore, uh, having the funds available keeps the whole entity going as opposed to if we, if we tuck money over here and tuck money over there and lowered everybody's water rate, it would all be great except the city could go out of business.
That, that's very true, like, i- it does help your overall finances and helps you be able to fund those expenses. And, you know, to give you kind of a little bit of background too on the pension and OPEB as well, so pension, uh, historically has been a requirement to be pre-funded, so not only do you have to make the payments that are required to be made in a, any single fiscal year, but you also have to pre-fund it over a certain time period, and the city has been doing that over time. So that's why if you look at the general employees', uh, pension system, I believe it's about sixty seven percent funded, and then if you look at the police and fire, I believe it's around seventy two or something like that, so that's why you've been pre-funding. OPEB, there is no such law, there has never been such law, so even though now the state of Michigan is uh, kind of mandating and kind of pushing municipalities to pre-fund, and they, they require a forty percent level of funding, um, it's more of, if you're not at forty percent, you have to report to us how you try and get to forty percent over a certain time period. And I believe it's a thirty year time period to get to forty percent, but historically, the OPEB is not required to be pre-funded, it's a pay as you go. So if you get two hundred thousand dollars in expenses, uh, you know, a month, um, the city just has to cut the check for two hundred thousand dollars, there's no trust that has to be set up, there's nothing that has to be making that, it's, it's required to just, as long as you're keeping up with the current expenses, it's totally fine. So that's why the OPEB has not been pre-funded.
Thank you.
Further questions? Okay, at this time, I will open it up to public comment. The public comment in regards,
We do have the letters as well, just.
We have Mr. Sue here. Please unmute yourself.
He's gonna unmute himself.
Mr. Abdul Haq, are you able to unmute yourself?
He's not saying anything.
Don't, anybody click on him, he's unmuting himself and then he's muting back.
Unmute yourselves on here.
Go ahead. There you go.
Okay, thank you, I'm just wishing everybody a happy Thanksgiving and holidays. Have a question to Mr. Martin. If this two million dollars is taken away, does the city have surplus budget or negative budget?
So those are technically two different things, so, uh, when you're budgeting, uh, for next year, I don't know what your budget looks like, uh, so if your revenues are in excess of your expenditures for next year, um, so I guess that's a question for, uh, the mayor, uh, or, um, the controller.
Let me, let me make it easier for you, Martin. First, thank you very much for what you have been doing, I appreciate everything you and your team has been doing.
Thank you.
Uh, you're welcome. If, if last year we would have took this two million dollars away and we put it in trust fund, one one five, would the city be in the plus or in the negative?
It's, so, to answer your question, you have to look at the time period throughout the year progressively, so not just at June thirtieth of two thousand twenty, at June thirtieth, thirtieth, twenty twenty, you'd still have a fund balance. But there's a time period during the year when you're collecting property taxes, when all that cash hasn't come in, that potentially you would have run out of cash. And I don't, I, I don't know your balances on a weekly basis through the year, I, unfortunately during the audit, it's, it's more of a focus on a snapshot of six, six thirty twenty twenty and six thirty nineteen in the past, but there's potential that come July, August, uh, or early September, you could have run out of cash, because your property taxes are actually not due until, I believe, uh, in September, so you have about ninety days or about seventy five days of operations that has to be sustained with the cash that's within the city in order to make payroll, any capital outlay, things like that.
If that happened, can the mayor go and the treasurer ask the city council to borrow from restricted fund and pay interest on it?
Uh, the restricted funds, I believe you're there, you're, you're only allowed to use for a specific purpose, I, I don't, I don't know how much you'd be able to use, and some of the, sometimes too, the restricted funds are already spoken for, maybe already been spent as well, so. And again, I don't know the cash balances on a weekly basis, because I don't know if your restricted funds would have covered enough of the cash needs for that first seventy five days in the year.
Sometime, if sometime during the year, we reach a point where we don't have much cash on hand, and this two million dollars not there, what would happen to, you know, the city?
Well, uh, so very likely, if you don't have enough cash, you probably wouldn't be able to make payroll. Uh, that's usually the first item, uh, which clearly that's a huge issue. Um, I don't know about one step more out, but just overall, uh, concerns over, you know, people working and things like that, or layoffs and et cetera. So it does cause a lot of issues, uh, the other issues, uh, potentially as a councilman, uh, Constant mentioned is, you know, bond ratings could, uh, be diminished, uh, as well, so then you're talking about extra interest costs on borrowings in the future, so for example, the loan that you're looking, or the bond that you're looking to issue for water and sewer fund, uh, instead of looking at the, I believe it was two or three percent interest rates, uh, that could be significantly impacted. So you can just imagine, you know, on twenty million dollar loan, you know, increase even by one percent, we're talking about some significant dollars accumulating.
Can they take a portion of the two million and put it, let's say, one million and put it there, because we give the police and fire every year one million and sixty seven thousand dollars for their OPEB. And we give around four hundred sixty two million thousand to the general government. Okay, it seems like we are not worried about the one million we give the police and fire, but we are worried about the five hundred thousand we are going to give to the general government.
Yep, so,
Is it because, is it because that goes on acta three forty five, and automatically we, we tax the people for it without going back to anybody?
Well, so the police and fire OPEB, uh, the liability itself is a hundred twenty one million in total. Uh, the general government employee OPEB trust is only fifty million, so if you're looking at the dollars that are being funded or paid, the liability for the general employees is much smaller, so as a percentage, what you're funding for police and fire.
Thirty two to sixty eight approximately.
So that's, that's why the differential, but to, to answer your question, uh, honestly, two million dollars, uh, the city council could decide to put in, you know, any dollar amount of that into the trust. So you don't have to put into full two million, if you chose that, you know, you're comfortable with putting, let's just say, five hundred thousand this year, that is still gonna give you enough of a surplus that you can maintain operations, and then wait twelve months and see how the operations are doing, and decide maybe put another five hundred thousand at that time, you can definitely choose to do that.
So the city council have the, the choice of putting portion of this money away in one one five fund if they choose to, they don't have to take the whole amount.
That's absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good, this time I have Councilman Bazey, go ahead, please.
Um, so I was looking at the findings, um, in, uh, one of the attachments you sent, I mean, that's, that looks alarming, you know, with a lot of significant findings.
Yes.
So, okay, so, I mean, I don't want to go through all of it, but, uh, one of, one of my questions for Plant Moran is, uh, uh, several meetings ago, you know, we talked about, um, uh, giving the information for the financial audit that we had a forensic, uh, you know, we call forensic audit, but the financial audit. Um, so, the last I heard, I don't know if there's any update, you know, that you guys are not supplying, uh, the company who's doing the foren, uh, or the financial audit, the information, because, you know, looking at these findings, uh, that's, to me, that's alarming, especially moving funds, you know, a lot of the findings that are very significant. Um, so I guess I need to know what the status is, uh, for you guys supplying that information, what needs to be sent. Um, um, I don't know if there was a subpoena to get that information from Plant Moran, but the last I heard that they're still don't, don't have all the information. I know, so, council members were supplied with a way to go in, but I, I tried to go in there, but the information, it looked like it was encrypted. So, uh, we still, I mean, the council, you, um, approved, or we voted on trying to get the information, so I don't know what the issue is, and I don't know, uh, if you guys supplied it, but, uh, as of maybe a week or so back, uh, there was nothing, so Plant Moran, I guess they have to talk to their legal team. So I, I'd like to find out what's going on.
Yeah, so we have provided all the information, um, about, I believe it was the first week in September, uh, that was requested that we were able to provide because we had the documents. Uh, clearly, there's some documents that we don't have possession of, uh, that were on the request list, so we can provide those. If, uh, the city council was not able to access those documents, uh, in the secure website, uh, we are happy to, uh, honestly provide you copies of that document, those documents, uh, even if it's hard copy, or we can, uh, share them, uh, we can also send the links, and I don't know if we did that or not, uh, Nikki, you may know. Um, but we can share the, um, also the links to, with the mayor and the controller, and perhaps they can provide you with the documents. Unfortunately, um, I did check with our legal department, and we're not able to send directly to a third party uh, any documents, and the reason for that, even if there's an approval from the city council, and the reason for that is, um, once we provide documents to an external party, then we're kind of like the he said, she said, uh, deal that, well, you gave us this information even when we didn't, or something like that. So we want to make sure that we're giving you the documents that you see exactly what we've provided, and then you know exactly what you gave versus the third party second guessing the information that we gave, and maybe saying we didn't give them enough, or something like that, so it, honestly, it creates a lot of problems for us if we just gave it to someone else. So that's why we have to give it to the city only, and we can give it to the city council, we can give it to others in the administration, um, and we're happy to do so, and like I said, we gave that, now it's almost three months ago. Um, we haven't heard anything since, so I didn't know if this was even looked at, um, we haven't heard any questions or anything like that, so I assumed all the information was adequate, but I really didn't even know that this wasn't even looked at yet.
Yeah, I, I, I know, like I said, uh, for the last week or week and a half, there's still concern with that, so let me, let me follow up.
Yeah, please do, and I just let me know, feel free to give me a call, uh, feel free to give me a call, my cellphone, uh, or send me an email, and, uh, what, what, like I said, what we can do is, um, we can even reproduce them hard copy wise, and we can send them to the council, and that can be passed on as well. It will take probably a couple of weeks to have that done, uh, just with COVID, and there's limited personnel in the office to be able to, uh, print those documents, but we can definitely do that.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. And, and Nikki, uh, since Councilman Bazey was talking about the findings, I think this would be a good segue to talk about the findings from the, especially from the single, single audit report, because those were the most significant items. Uh, the post audit, audit letter, or just general recommendations that I would say would be more control, control kind of button up items versus material weaknesses or significant deficiencies.
Man, I, I know we have less than about ten minutes for the, we have, we have the regular meeting shortly, so, uh, I know, I mean, we can read the findings. Is there a way, uh, that we can actually get like more in detail? Because I know some of it, uh, just kind of highlights, uh, the findings where some issues with, the same money is being moved in general, but is, is, can we get something more specific?
Absolutely, and I, that's why Nikki was gonna go over it, so that way it's a little bit more detailed, and we can definitely cover it in less than ten minutes, I, I don't, I don't believe that's gonna be a problem at all.
So you should have the other deliverable that Martin was referring to, this is referred to on the cover page as the federal awards information, and so I'm starting on page, um, nine of that document where the, where the findings are. And so, this first finding is related to journal entries that we identified, uh, during the audit in order for the financial statements to be properly stated at June thirtieth. Uh, the entries that we identified were related to receivables, uh, deferred revenue, accounts payable, and net position. Uh, I, we do want to point out, though, that this is a comment we've had in the letter for, for a few years. Um, it's like Martin alluded to, we're looking at things from a thousand feet, and at one point in time, so there are things that naturally we're gonna catch as, as part of our procedures, um, but this year, the number of entries that were identified by us uh, did decrease significantly from what we would have found in the past, so we do want to commend the city on the overall improvement that we did see this year. Um, going forward, though, we would just recommend with the department changes taking place right now that you continue to focus on ensuring that processes and controls are in place to produce that accurate financial information.
And essentially, uh, so the thought process is, it's called a material weakness, because the city was literally gonna print their financial statements and issue those without us checking and posting those entries, the statements would have been materially misstated. Um, so when we were testing, we noticed that certain things were not adjusted, a- as of your end, that needed to be adjusted as the items that, uh, Nikki mentioned, and those were posted, because we provided the detail, the support, et cetera, from our testing to the city, and the city agreed that those items needed to be posted, so those were posted, and your statements are correctly stated.
Yep. Um, moving on to the next page, the, the second finding we have relates to the allocation of costs between funds. Uh, and there was progress made during the year on a few of the items, and this is a repeat comment, um, but there are a couple that do remain to, to still be reviewed. So specifically, it's the allocation of the insurance and retiree healthcare expenses between the corporate fund and the water and sewer fund, uh, the indirect costs that go into the construction code fee calculation, and then the annual fee charge to the police and, and fire pension fund. Um, these don't have an updated underlying basis to support the amounts that are charged. And so the recommendation here is that the city continue to revisit these allocation methodologies, uh, just to ensure that funds are paying for their full share of the expense, and that the allocations being done are, are reasonable and supported.
Um, I have Mo has a comment, and then we need to wrap this up, we're getting close to the starting time of our next meeting.
Yeah, I didn't know if it was public comments or not, um, I just, I just wanted to come in and say congratulations to Lisa Hicks, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Uh, you know, I know it's the holidays, mask up, stay safe, and great job to Plant Moran and everything that they're doing out here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving to you too.
Thank you.
So we have a public comment before we move on to ending the meeting. Okay, at this time, did you have anything else to say, Nicolette?
Um, I was gonna run through the rest of the findings, but we don't have to, if there are questions related to them, we're more than happy to, to address those at a later time.
Yeah, the other items, uh, I mean, so the first couple that Nicolette mentioned, uh, were previous findings. Uh, next couple are, to, to be honest, new ones. Um, you know, the, the bank reconciliation, timely, uh, timely reconciliations, uh, should be performed, and the other one is making sure that you can accumulate and summarize your federal expenditures, uh, making sure that's accurate, so those will be the biggest items. Um, overall, I would say there's no other like significant items other than buttoning up, and those are in the documents that are, um, um, you know, that were delivered to you as well. Uh, we're also happy to answer any questions subsequent to this meeting, so, uh, don't feel that, you know, the time limit, uh, stops immediately. Uh, feel free to reach out to us outside of, uh, formal meetings, or we can also attend another study session or anything like that, if you'd like to as well.
At this time, we do have John Riley, hand his hand up. Can we please unmute John Riley?
Oh, hi, hi, Martin, um, we had our general government pension board meeting prior to this, uh, city council study session. And one of the items, uh, that came to our attention through an email, And one of the items that came to our attention through an email from somebody at Plant Moran through Linda. Was that the general government pension fund would no longer be part of the city's audited financial statements. Because of the makeup of its board for twenty twenty one, can you kind of elaborate a little bit on that?
So there's a new GAZB that's coming out, that's not effective until next year, so it's GAZB number eighty four. And it's looking at fiduciary funds differently, so there's different definitions of how it qualifies to be included in the financial statements. And I know that we were talking with your, with the city. And deciding on how to be able to present the statements and the pension itself in the statements next year. So nothing's been concluded upon, I don't believe Nikki fully. But it does, there's some question marks on how it's going to be presented because of the new GAZB coming out. I would say for most municipalities, it's not a huge difference. However, in this case, it could be, I think it could muck things up a little bit. So we have to try and figure out with the city what the best course of action is to be able to present it correctly.
I see, so you'll come back with the administration and or the council and there'll be further discussion regarding that.
Correct, and it's going to be one of those things that we'll be definitely covering with the new controller to make sure that. You know, we're able to show this properly for the twenty one year.
Thank you.
GAZB is not, doesn't have a boring moment, so there's always new pronouncements and everything. So unfortunately, they don't let it be. There is a new pronouncement that came out this past year, the, the only one that ever anybody liked, is actually delayed a lot of the pronouncements. But that's pretty much it.
Abdullah, did you have one last remark before we close?
Yeah, just a quick question for Martin. Obviously, there's a lot of different things that are recommendations and conditions and criteria and findings. What is the process that you're going to use at Plant Moran to be able to follow up on this to make sure that the city administration? You know, checks off things as have been done versus waiting until the, I hope not, next audit. In between monthly basis or weekly basis or semi-weekly basis, whatever it happens to be.
Yeah, so we're happy to come back at any point in time during the year if the city corrects some of these items. For example, like the allocations, the calculations, we're happy to come back and take a look and see if that's been corrected. The year end adjustments, it's a little bit more challenging because that would be one that clearly is done only once a year usually. But you know, bank recusations are done timely, that's another one that can be checked anytime, at any point in time. So we're happy to do so at any point, at any time if the city would like us to. Normally, what happens.
See, that's not what I'm looking for, because based on that, that would mean that the city's policing itself. And they're calling you to come out and check what they did or didn't do. So if somebody didn't do nothing, they won't call you. Is there a way we could do it where you automatically go ahead and look into this? And if it's outside of council, I'd be more than happy to do a resolution to have you automatically check on us, just to make sure things that T's are being crossed and I's are being dotted.
Yeah, so we work for the council, so if you'd like us to come back in at any point in time, we're happy to do so. So if there's like an agenda item that you'd like us, you know, to make the motion to have us come in at a certain point in time, we're happy to do so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, at this time, I'd like to end our study session. We're going to recess for about ten minutes, we'll be back at seven oh five to begin our meeting.